Good morning. Thank you. Thank you very much. Good morning, everyone, and thank you for being here. Before we get started with the formal introductions, I'd like to take an opportunity to sincerely thank the nominating panel members who are here, who worked diligently to come up with this list of folks that we whittled down to nine, who are going to lead our city's education family into the next generation. So I want to thank Kimberly Pham. Hello. Stephanie Nadoff. Bonnie Camarda. Sean Vereen. Thank you. And Darren Magnum. Thank you. I'd also like to thank council members who are here today, our Education Chair, Councilwoman Blackwell, our Council President, Darrell Clark. Al Talbemberger is here. I think Derek Green, I saw somewhere. Curtis Jones, I see. And Helen Gim, I see also. So thank you very much for being here. Thank you for joining us this morning as we take a major step towards re-establishing local control over our schools. The School District of Philadelphia, under the leadership of Dr. Height, has made great improvements over the past few years. We're seeing positive trend lines in many areas, from early literacy to career readiness. As we reflect on the hard-won stability in our schools and the significance of local control, we are announcing that the Board -- we are announcing that the Board -- I am confident that the Board we're announcing today is ready for the work ahead of us. This has not been an easy process. Over 500 people applied, and the nominating panel did an amazing and thorough job in reviewing each and every person's qualifications and background. At the end of their process, they recommended 45 highly qualified and passionate individuals, all of whom were ready to serve with distinction. It was extremely difficult to make -- extremely difficult decision to make, and I would like to thank all the individuals who went through this rigorous process. And we look forward to keeping everyone involved and supporting public education in Philadelphia. When we asked Philadelphians what they wanted to see in future Board of Education members, they said that having members committed to public education was their number-one priority, while qualifications and backgrounds of members was nearly as important. People wanted a diverse school board, representing various backgrounds and experiences. We took all these factors into account as we reviewed potential appointees. Our team met with every single person recommended, and we considered not just their individual strengths and attributes, but how they would work together as a board to represent our students' interests and improve our schools. From those 45 highly qualified individuals, I am proud to appoint today nine great Philadelphians to serve on the new Board of Education. We believe that all appointees all share a vital passion for quality education, and that their different backgrounds and perspectives will guide them well as they make decisions that will ensure a better future for public education in Philadelphia. I am pleased to appoint the following individuals to the new Philadelphia Board of Education. I would like for each of them to come up and say a few words after their introductions. First, Joyce Wilkerson and Chris McGinley. A year and a half ago, I had the opportunity to make my first two appointments to the SRC. Unlike the Board of Education, no one was clamoring to apply, for sure. Twist and some arms. We were lucky to recruit two incredibly talented and qualified individuals. It took a lot of wooing and maybe a bit of begging to get them to say yes. I am grateful to both of these two individuals for the work they have done over the past year and a half. For the first time in over four years, the Philadelphia teachers have a contract. And I want to thank Jerry Jordan and his staff for all their hard work and support through this entire process. I really thank you. Thanks to Joyce and Chris's leadership, the SRC voted to dissolve last November. Without them, we would not be here today, appointing a new Board. I welcome the role they will play in ensuring a smooth transition to local control. They have a unique understanding of the challenges the district faces and a demonstrated commitment to making bold moves we need to embrace. Chris, unfortunately, could not be here today, but I am pleased to appoint him to the Board. He is a product of Philadelphia schools and comes from a family of educators. Chris is an Associate Professor of Education at Temple and has formerly been a Philadelphia public school teacher, principal, and administrator, as well as superintendent of two suburban school districts. I thank Chris for his continued commitment to our schools. Joyce's extensive career in public services ranged from public interest law to chairing the Board of the Philadelphia Housing Authority. During her time as Chair of the SRC, Joyce oversaw important progress at the district, including the new PFT contract, and I am glad she has agreed to provide continued continuity of leadership as we build the school district's recent successes. I'd like to ask Joyce to come up and say a few words.
First, I'd like to thank the mayor for appointing me to the Board. When he asked me to serve on the SRC, I said, "There is nothing more important than the future of public edu --" our children and their future through public education. So I want to thank you. It's exciting. This is -- these are our children. The responsibility is our responsibility. And so I look forward to working with the other school members, sharing the responsibility with a group more than just five. There's a lot of hard work that needs to be done, and I'm excited to be a part of the district's future and supporting Dr. Height and all the wonderful things that are happening in our schools.
Thank you, Joyce. Our next appointee is Angela MacGyver. Angela has a passion for math, which I did not growing up, and for education. When you hear her talk about it, you can see that she is the type of person who gets kids excited to learn about math. She brings 25 years of experience as an educator, starting as a middle-school math teacher and eventually earning a PhD in teaching and learning. Angela is the founder of Trapezium Math Club, a program which, over the past 10 years, has helped children build strong foundational math skills through engaging after-school programming. Angela's three children attend 10 Philadelphia public schools. We talk a lot about preparing our kids for the tech jobs of today and tomorrow, and that starts with a strong STEM education. I believe that Angela's content knowledge and passion for quality education will make her a fantastic Board member. And I'd like to ask her to come up to say a few words.
Thank you so much. I have been involved in education in Philadelphia for a long time. I started as a middle-school math teacher, but I left teaching math to run a program at Temple University called the Upward Bound Math Science Program. And our entire goal was to work with low-income first-generation students from Philadelphia high schools and get them into college, get them into math and science fields. We were extremely successful getting our kids into college. In fact, a number of my students are now teachers in the school district. But we were not as successful getting them into math and science fields. And I was really curious why our kids were not being successful. And that's what led me back to school, to study how children learn math. Initially, older children, kids who get out of elementary school. In the last 10 years, I've been focusing on working with elementary students so that our kids can start middle-school in algebra, ready to learn. I am incredibly excited about being part of this Board, and thank you so much.
I'd like to also recognize Councilman Dom, who just showed up. And where is Blondelle Reynolds Brown? Right there. And I just want to point out that we're very women-heavy here. Lots of strong, smart women to lead us, so thank you. Our next appointment is Mallory Fix Lopez. Educator, community motivator, entrepreneur, mother, and neighbor. That's how Mallory described her five core roles in her Board application. Mallory began her career in Philadelphia schools as a teacher of social studies and English as a second language. And today, she is a full-time faculty member at CCP, where she specializes in ESL. She has worked to organize job skills training for local immigrant restaurant workers. Mallory is also a small-business owner who believes every business should give back to their neighborhood and puts her restaurant's money where her mouth is. She is a fierce advocate for her neighborhood, for her neighborhood school, which is Child's Elementary, which her child will attend in three years. And I look forward to her now serving as an advocate for quality schools in every neighborhood. Mallory, please.
I am very nervous. Cameras are totally new to me, so bear with me. I have been an educator in Philadelphia for 10 years, starting -- for over 10 years, starting at the School District of Philadelphia at Thomas Edison High School in North Philadelphia. I was thrown into a classroom with English-language learners, but had no training on how to work with that population. And that experience led me to pursue my graduate degree in teaching English as a second language. Because I realized, working with those students at Edison, I recognized the value of voice and self-advocacy. And I realized I needed more skills to use in the classroom to be able to give that to my students. From there, I've had the opportunity to work in a lot of different educational settings, from small nonprofits, volunteering in local community centers, institutions of higher ed. I worked at Temple University and more College of Art and Design in teacher training, teaching future teachers how to work with non-native speakers of English, giving them something that I didn't have prior to going into the classroom. And so I'm -- I look forward to listening to the invaluable teachers, administrators, staff, community members, and students as we work together to strengthen our schools and to provide an equitable and quality education for all Philadelphia young people.
Our next appointee is Maria McCollgan. Maria's career has always centered on children and education. Her experience as a teacher in Philadelphia public schools helped shape her passion for learning and education and also led her into a second career as a pediatrician, who has provided care for thousands of our most vulnerable children. Maria will bring to the Board many valuable perspectives as a physician, a former educator, a parent of two charter school students, and a product of Philadelphia schools herself. She currently works at the CARES Institute and Cooper University Hospital and has served on the Board of the Pennsylvania Children's Trust Fund, Philadelphia Academy Charter School, and a group she founded called Prevent Child Abuse Pennsylvania. Maria?
Thank you. I first want to start by thanking the nominating panel, the mayor's staff, and countless others for their support through the nominating process and all of the countless interviews. And I'm really honored and excited and grateful to the mayor for appointing me to the Board of Education. I'm a lifelong Philadelphian. I am committed to our children here in Philadelphia. As you heard the mayor say, I attended Philadelphia schools for over 20 years. I got my bachelor's degree at Temple, my master's in elementary education, as well as my medical degree, all here in Philadelphia, Temple University. In addition to that, I have been an educator all throughout my career. I taught for a few years in Philadelphia public schools, and I too was thrown into a classroom, not even knowing what grade I would be teaching until the day beforehand. And I saw some of the struggles that our teachers face here in Philadelphia. And even when I went back to medical school and through my pediatric residency at St. Christopher's Hospital and in founding the Child Protection Program at St. Christopher's Hospital for Children, my focus has always been on education, educating college students, master's-level students, medical students, and now fellows as the Fellowship Director at the CARES Institute and Cooper University. My husband and I are both passionate about education in Philadelphia. He's now serving as the president of Newman-Goretty High School.
I came to Philadelphia about 26 years ago from Silicon Valley. I have never been more bullish for the future of the city as a place of economic growth, as a place that lifts everyone up and doesn't leave anybody behind, and as a place where both of those things work together and are needed. And Mayor Kenny, I appreciate your vision in leading the city in that direction as well. In my day job, I'm a principal at E-Consult Solutions. I have another full-time job, which is as a dad of three kids. They're all adopted. Two from Asia, one who is black. And so the fact that schools need to work for our children, and particularly children of color, is of deep personal interest to me. And I'm honored to serve, and I plan to serve, with all of my heart and all of my soul and all my strength and all of my mind. Thank you very much.
Our next appointee we'd like to introduce is Julia Danzy. Julia has dedicated her life to the welfare of Philadelphia's children, having served in the Pennsylvania Department of Welfare, Philadelphia City Council, and as Deputy Commissioner for Children's Services in the Philadelphia Health Department. Julia's career speaks to her expertise in the various systems that interact with public schools to ensure the well-being -- to ensure the well-being of our students. I believe this will make her a knowledgeable and strong advocate for children on our Board. I'd like to ask her to come up.
Good morning. I would like to thank the mayor for this great opportunity. As he's spoken, my life has been in working in child welfare, in social services, and across the social services systems. And the one thing that has always frustrated me was the inability for us to form the partnerships we needed in terms of our children who are in the school system. Regrettably, we've always treated them as stratified objects rather than looking at them as a whole. If they're hungry, they cannot concentrate. If their health is not good, they cannot attend or they cannot comprehend. If they have emotional stresses from community problems, from home problems, there is no way to focus. If we cannot bring these services together to work with the school system in order for our children in a more holistic way to be prepared for the educational process and therefore then able to achieve in the educational process, there will be no change in our system. And so it is my honor to be able to serve and to be able to try to lead us in a better way of working together and having an integrated partnership between the systems that are supposed to be there for those social and emotional pieces and the system that should be there for the teaching and the training of our children so that one day we can all look at our kids and say, "We have more who graduate. We have more who attend. We have more who achieve. We have more who are ready when they leave this system to be able to accomplish adults in the world." Thank you.
Next, we have Letitia Ihia Hinton is our next appointee. Letitia brings a valuable social services perspective to the Board of Education. She was the first in her family to receive a high school diploma and now holds two master's degrees, including a social work degree from Penn. Currently an adjunct professor of social welfare, Letitia has also been an advocate for the city's homeless residents for decades, serving as the Director of Office of Emergency Shelter and Services and later the Office of Supportive Housing. Letitia has been a public school parent and will draw on her personal experience as well as her expertise in service to Philadelphia's children. Letitia?
Good morning. And thank you, Mayor Kenny and all of the nominating committee. It was an intensive process. I'm exhausted. I just got here from Puerto Rico yesterday from visiting my dad. So it's been a process. So I got the call certainly when I was in an Uber on my way home. You know, I come with a lot of experience in the nonprofit world, government, et cetera. But for me, the most important thing has been the role of advocate. Because whenever you work with populations that are disenfranchised, like the ones that I've worked, homeless population, a lot of people don't realize the number of families that are homeless and that we have had to do a lot of advocating for. And many of our children, many of the teachers may not necessarily know, and people may not know who it is that's sitting behind that desk and what their experience, as my colleagues have spoken about. It is my hope that what I bring to this Board is a spirit, a voice, for those that cannot advocate for themselves. I have always been the voice in the wilderness in many situations, whether it's in my own personal life but especially for those in my experience with the city of Philadelphia in particular. So my hope is that as a Board that we will not only learn, but that we will listen and that we will hear and that we will be able to communicate in developing a partnership between us but with those who are interested in children, like the Board of Education, the city of Philadelphia, and our partners in the community, like parents, for example, and the surrounding community. So I'm pleased, I'm certainly excited, a little nervous about this experience, but it was the first. Look, I was the first to graduate from high school and did a lot of things in my family that was first. Now I'm a part of a first as well in this particular environment. Thank you.
Our last appointee, our ninth appointee, is Wayne Walker. Wayne was the first in this family to go to college and is a firm believer in the transformative power of a quality education. He has spent his entire career focusing on governance and organizational change for large and complex organizations. He is an expert in Board governance, having served as Chair of Habitat for Humanity International. He currently is on the Board of Trustees of the National Philanthropic Trust. When I heard about Wayne's credentials, I was so impressed that I wondered if he would really be seriously interested. Then I learned that we had something in common: a Jesuit education. You know what I'm talking about. Which has taught us the importance of public service. I'm very glad that he will bring his expertise to public service and play an important role in the formation and success of the new Philadelphia Board of Education. Wayne?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Kenny, first, I want to thank you for your dedication and leadership in restoring control of our school system to all Philadelphians. I thank you for this appointment. I am honored. I'm humble. And I'm excited. I know the power of education. I can just look at my own experiences and the opportunity that come to me as a result of that. So I want to do everything I can to make sure that all Philadelphians, including those who are left out and those who are left behind, have a chance to pursue and obtain an incredible education. I look forward to working with my colleagues, whom I congratulate, I'll forward to work with Mayor Kenny, Dr. Height, President Clark, City Council, and all stakeholders as we look forward to pursuing for all of Philadelphia an excellent education for our citizens. Thank you very much.
Last month, we proposed a budget that would provide the local funding needed to continue these improvements by making key investments in things like more staff and modernized classrooms. This is the best investment our city can make right now. But I know it's a big ask for our residents. In return, they deserve to have local control restored to their school system. I am willing to be accountable to our residents for the success of our students and schools. I believe that the new Board we've appointed will help us sustain and accelerate improvements in our schools and ensure that public education in Philadelphia moves forward, not backwards. We are on our way to making sure that all schools can fulfill the potential, which is to help every student realize their own potential. I want to welcome Dr. Height to say a few words and recognize him again for his continuous leadership. I look forward to working with the district to ensure a smooth transition in government. And I ask Dr. Height to come up.
Thank you, Mayor Kenny, and thank you, and congratulations, and congratulations. And I want to share also my thanks for you and your vision for public education here in Philadelphia and for making a commitment to support public education as part of your work as mayor. So thank you on behalf of all of the children attending public schools here in Philadelphia. Council President, members of City Council, thank you as well for your continued support. And I'm excited, and I don't know about all of you. And I just heard from eight individuals who make up the new Board of Education. And I don't know about you, but I'm really excited after hearing these individuals this morning. And I look forward to working with all of you. And I think that one thing that resonated with me, Jerry, I know it resonated with you as well, as we heard from these individuals speaking individually and collectively unintentionally, this is about making sure that all children, irrespective of where they are in the city, have access to a high-quality education and that no one is left behind as a part of their public education. And that public education is a pair forward as we think about a city and as we think about economic development opportunities and as we think about our future. So I look forward to working with this esteemed group. I want to thank Mayor Kenny again, and I want to highlight the fact that the mayor has proposed a budget that will allow us to continue the momentum. And we are in the best academic and financial shape that we've been in since I've been superintendent. And we have a long ways to go and a lot of work to do. But with the mayor's commitment to fully funding the school district for the next five years, I believe that we can get there. And I'm thrilled to be working with this group that is being named as the new Board of Education. I'm thrilled to be working with you to ensure that we get there together. And on behalf of all of the children, thank you for taking on this commitment.
Since I was sworn in as mayor in 2016, this has been a partnership with City Council, a body I served in for almost 24 years. So with that spirit of cooperation and partnership, I'd like to ask Council President Clark come up and say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, you had the pleasure of voting for a tax increase to support schools. Now you get to ask for a tax increase to support. I'm sure to all of these -- I understand. I understand. No, but Mayor, I just want to thank you and your team for your continued -- and I want to thank you personally for your commitment. You've probably visited more schools personally than all the preceding mayors. And I just want to thank you so much for your commitment. It means a lot to all of us. Dr. Height, what can I say? You came into the middle of a fire. I don't know what to call it, but you -- that's what you came into. I mean, it was crazy. I mean, all kinds of things with respect to the structure of the school district, the union contract, the lack of funding, all the things. And you stayed steady. I was like checking out, had somebody watching your house to see if you snuck out with a bag. Yo, I'm out of here, right? But I want to thank you for hanging in there and committing. And now we're on the right track. I just want to thank you so much. And I want to thank my colleagues, particularly this lady over here, who was like, you know, from day one, she had to convince me that we need to go back to local control. I remember that ballot question, Janie, you put on the ballot, and it was overwhelming public support. And I want to thank you as a Chair of Education for so much for what you've done over the years. As we affectionately call her Janie from Chaney, right? But the reality is that this is an awesome day. It's great to see everybody here committed, moving forward. I want to thank all of the advocates and the labor movement to make sure that we have sustained funding stream, to make sure that we have what we need to make sure that we advance our children advance our children to the level that we truly need to achieve. But most importantly, I want to thank our parents. Our parents, because at the end of the day, it's about their children, and a number of us have had the opportunity to have children in the public education system, and we understand the importance. One of the things I'd like to say, and I'll stop talking in a minute, is that the best social service program is a good job slash career, right? But the reality is the only way you can achieve that is to have a good education. So that's why this is so important, and I agree with you, Mayor, this should be point one. To the newly selected school board members, God bless you. You're gonna need it. But seriously, you guys, I mean, the commitment that you're going to show and what you've shown by accepting this nomination is going to be awesome. So I just want to thank everybody that's been involved in this. Again, thank you, Mayor. Thank you all, my colleagues. This is an awesome day for an awesome city and ultimately an awesome educational system. Thank you all so much.
Thank you very much, Council President, and my glasses are off, so this is me. Fifty years ago today, Martin Luther King was assassinated. 1968, I was nine years old. It was a very confusing and difficult time as we're going through right now in this country. And Dr. King's efforts initially were about civil rights and voting rights and access. But in 1968 and around there, he started expanding into different areas. One was his opposition to Vietnam War, which we all know was a disaster for our country. Fifty-eight thousand people were taken from us. But the other area that he talked about was economic equity and justice. And he became a very polarizing figure. He was a polarizing figure for some people, some ignorant people in the community to begin with, but when he started moving in areas of against the war and for economic justice, he became even more polarizing. And then he was killed. We have made great progress in this country since his death and because of his life, but we're not even close to being there yet. It's not even close. The economic inequity in this country is stark, and it's stark, the most stark, in a city where we have a 25% or 26% poverty rate. And the only way we're going to achieve economic justice and equity and fairness is education. It's the only answer. It's not a program, it's not anything else. So when our kids enter pre-K, because we passed the beverage tax to provide that pre-K, and when they go to a school that has community services and other things, and when they have equitable facilities like libraries and rec. centers in their neighborhoods, and when they go to a school that actually educates them, so that when we chase the Amazons and we chase the apples and we chase the companies that we chase because everybody's chasing them, our kids need to be ready in the next 10, 12, 13, 15 years to take that job at that company. Right now, they're not. Too many of them... Some of them are, but too many of them are not. And if people want to complain about paying for education, complain. But it's an economic investment. It's an economic development investment. Because if you consider the fact that too many of our kids cannot hold a job to sustain a family, cannot hold a job to buy a house and to pay taxes and to do the things our parents all wanted us to do, if you think that's acceptable, it's unacceptable. It's unacceptable. And if you think beyond your own little Pfizer's, your own little things that cover what you want to see around, you will understand that that economic investment is good for all of us because there will be a larger tax base. They will be paying more taxes, they will be buying houses, they will be raising families. They won't be locked up, they won't be addicted, they won't be on the streets, and they won't be buried before their time. That's what this is about. And I am so happy that on this day that we remember Dr. King and his sacrifice, because you know, he knew it was coming. He was like Jesus. He knew that this was coming, and he still walked into the fire anyway. We're not asking anyone to do what he did because no one could do what he did. But the point is that we need to rededicate ourselves to the fact that our children need to have economic equity, and the only way they can be equal and meet their potential is by having an education that provides a job that can raise a family and give people dignity. And that's what this is about. And if you want to quibble about the cost of it, quibble, because there's no reason to move forward unless we do this, and we'll never meet our potential unless we do it. So I just want to thank all the board members that have agreed to serve. This is the most critically important task that we face. All the other things that we deal with in city government are important and critical and difficult, but this is the most difficult thing we have to do, and we have to do it. So I want to thank you all for being here today. Thank you.
Good morning, and thank you, Mayor Kenny, Council President, members of council, Dr. Height, and I also see, you know, parents, friends, teachers here today, part of this very important occasion. Thank you for joining us on this important occasion, and I am Otis Hackney, the Chief Education Officer for the city of Philadelphia. Today's appointments came from months of collective effort by many people, including the Philadelphia residents who applied for the board, made nominations, filled out surveys, and shared their views with the administration. The amount of engagement and excitement around the process reflects how much Philadelphians value public education, and it gives me great hope for the future of our schools. For months to come, the district and administration will work together to ensure a smooth transition in governance. The School Reform Commission will continue to oversee the district until their official dissolution effective June 30th of this year. Until that time, the board's main responsibilities, and we've actually heard it from several members today, will be to listen and learn. Beginning this month, the board will go through an orientation process that covers their upcoming roles and responsibilities, the district's finances, the district action plan, and other key areas of district governance. The orientation will be broad and deep. It will ensure that come July 1st, each of the appointees will be ready to hit the ground running as the Board of Education becomes a reality. The board will also go on school visits in the coming weeks and participate in citywide listening tours. The first event, which will be held at one of our community schools, will be on Wednesday, April 25th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Merle Dobbin CTE High School. More dates will be posted online later today. We encourage students, parents, educators, and community members to attend these events and let the appointees know about your thoughts and concerns for the district, your hopes and dreams for the future, and your hopes and dreams for the future. Everyone has a role to play in ensuring that we have quality schools in every neighborhood, and the listening tour will be a great opportunity for residents to play their role. At this time, we have a few moments to take a few brief questions... We have a few moments to take questions from the media at this time.
Joyce and Chris are awesome, but I do believe that it's up to the board, you know, that they need to talk collectively amongst themselves and determine what direction they want to go in leadership. My management style to date has been appointing really qualified people and allowing them to do their job. So I'm not... I didn't play a role in suggesting who should be nominated, who should be sent to... I stayed totally out of it. I wanted the process to be organic, and it was, it is, and I think that they will make the decision on who the president should be.
Mayor, do you want to argue that the state fails to support education adequately? Understands Philadelphia's schools, you're setting the issue with ourselves now. Do you think that appointing this board in any way helps you convince folks in Harrisburg that their funding benefits here is something I have?
I'm not appointing a board to convince anybody in Harrisburg about anything. I'm appointing a board to run the district in the best way possible, and other communities throughout our Commonwealth support their education. If you go out to the immediate suburbs, real estate taxes are, you know, higher than they are here, and their schools generally are better than they are here. So I'm not discounting the state's role, and I think at some point in time after this election cycle, this governor's election cycle, and when they hit the wall economically and as far as raising revenue, they're going to have to do something different, I suspect. And when we have that issue happen, we'll have another discussion. But in the meantime, we've been waiting for years and going up hat in hand and waiting for Superman to save us, and Superman doesn't exist.
You call it a big ass, you call it a big ass league, the tax league. Does this board representing, you know, the city help with that big act? Is that helping convince others?
I'm hopeful. I'm very impressed with all of them, and I think that they can articulate within the communities that they come from and who they represent and talk to that this is worthwhile investment. This is not about bailing out anything. This is the same economic investment that we would make in trying to attract a company or trying to keep a company or trying to, you know, do anything we do. If you don't fund your schools adequately, you will be a failure as a city.
Are you urging these folks, these new board members, to speak to their constituents, city folks in their neighborhood, to support the revenue increase that you're seeking? Would you like that?
No, I don't want them to be politicians. I want them to run the school district, basically.
Question on Saturday.
My question concerns the selection of the board itself. My understanding was when this process was initiated that there were two things that disqualified people from the board. One was being a member of the office, another was being a current member of the SRC. Yet we had two members of the SRC...
No, they're not members. They resigned.
But they weren't resigned before they were selected today.
They resigned before they could be selected, yes.
Okay.
And we appointed two people to replace them. Okay. Thank you. Anybody? Yes, sir.
How many of the current parents of SRC...
Raise your hands. And one future. Who's actually a member of the board, the parent board at Child's Elementary, and she doesn't have any... Her child is not in school yet. Thank you.